Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Director Ab, would you take the call?
Yes. Chairperson McHale?
Here.
Commissioner Hannon?
Here.
Commissioner Marvel?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Absent their Commissioners Scanlon and Commissioner Folletier, we can have a call.
Would anybody like to move to accept the minutes from the July 26, 2017 meeting?
So who?
Second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Any visitors, citizens' requests, communications? I'd like to note that we have a new village trustee liaison, trustee Sedvey. So, welcome. Thanks for joining tonight.
Sure.
We can move on to our public hearing. Call the public hearing to order. Let the record reflect that all the members are still here. So I'll read an abbreviated portion of the notice of the public hearing. We're going to consider an application from the petitioner Gregory Trupbeck on behalf of the First American Bank for a variation from Section 10-7-3.I of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance to allow refuse container to be located between a building and a front or corner side lot line for the property located at 15 Riverside Road in the B2 Central Business District in order to build a dumpster enclosure along the south side of the building adjacent to Riverside Road. Would you like to swear in our petition?
Certainly. If you wouldn't mind raising your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. Would you like to go to the podium and present your case, please?
Thank you. My name is Greg Trupbeck. I'm with Economic Standards Architects on 130 East Randolph in Chicago on behalf of First American Bank. And I actually have been working with First American for over 20 years on various properties. We've done some work in this facility also in the past, mostly inside of it. The bank has been keeping the trash enclosures for both the bank portion and for the residential portion on that corner right here on the southeast corner of the building. And my understanding is they require your equipment enclosure, so we're going ahead putting an enclosure. And when we design the enclosure that's on this corner, we're told that you can't have it on the frontage or facing a residence or another business. The property essentially is between Riverside and Quincy. It's three sides of frontage. If we were to put a trash enclosure in the back in the parking lot, we'd lose some spaces, but also we'd have to take the trash down a couple of small steps here to get to that area, plus now you'd have the residences to the east and south looking down on trash enclosure, so instead of having them on the side here. So we think that although the view is mainly from here, that in general, that the best place for the enclosure would remain where the dumpsters have been in that corner. We're proposing a brick enclosure next to the building with a stone cap, and the opening would face towards the east. You wouldn't see the trash itself during any time when someone's being pulled out. Basically, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Ab, clear of the village report?
Yes. Let's see. The notice was published in the paper and the letters were sent to all of the neighbors. I have not received any comment, positive or negative, from any of the neighbors at this point. As it was stated, our code states that refuse containers shall be located only at the rear or side of the building. Refuse containers in the side area shall be completely screened from view along the public street, and no refuse container shall be located between a building and a front or corner side lot line, or between a building and a street lot line. He is correct in saying they do have three frontages, so since Riverside Road kind of curves along the building, it's a frontage on both the south and the west sides of the building, and then you have Quincy Street that is the frontage that they have on the north side of the building. They are proposing to keep the dumpster where they have been keeping it, where it's accessed off of a driveway that comes off of Riverside Road there on the south side of the building. As he said, it would be built to kind of match and work in with the building. The gates would face to the access drive as opposed to out towards the street, so it wouldn't be completely visible from the street. You would just be seeing that sidewall along the street, and they are proposing some landscaping around it, I believe.
Yes.
There is some landscaping in the area. So that is their proposal before you. If the variation is approved, then the village could issue the permit for the enclosure. You do have the standards for a variation outlined in your staff report. All seven of those standards do need to be met in order to recommend approval of the variation to the village board. You have some pictures or details of the proposed enclosure in your packet and sections of the code reference. And Gregor, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I did go a little out of order. Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Trupbeck?
I have a couple of questions, if you could, to the podium. Thank you. I'm looking at the plat of survey. If you were to put the refuse container in the back, where would it theoretically go?
We'd probably put it towards the, if you're looking at this, kind of the southeast corner, the parking spaces there. We obviously can't block the drive-through lane just to the south, so when you first pull in, you're trying to face it a couple of spaces, the two on the end. We'd probably end up taking those two to put it there. So you'd have to take the trash from the building either all the way down to there, or a dump truck, or a truck's got to come in all the way to the building to take it out. So either way, some distance added into it.
So that was my question. So this would be significantly further away from the building than it currently exists right now. You'd lose how many spots?
I would think two.
Two spots. Okay. That was my question.
I have a question. So why did you, did you look at the option of putting the dumpster adjacent to the east side of the building? So when you, where the dumpsters are now, there's a little walkway that goes off to the right and then goes back around the corner of the building, and there's an area with some burning bushes there. Did you look at the concept of putting the dumpster where those burning bushes are, which are just a few steps from where they are now?
I don't think that's bank property. There's right around the corner, as you're on the drive, on the curve going to the drive-through lanes, there's a little corner there, if you mean that, but beyond that, actually it becomes not bank property.
So, right adjacent to the bank building, there's an area, as I said, with some burning bushes there, and then you have the curved drive-through lane.
You're talking...
Is that not bank property right there?
Right, right in the direction.
Yeah. I'm talking right there.
Right there. I think it would be difficult to get... It still has the same problem of getting trash down a couple of steps. There's two steps that we get to. It's that little issue. But also, you have to get a dump truck, a dump truck, all the way back into the drive-through lane, and then kind of back out of there. And we'd like to try and avoid having the drive-through lane itself being blocked by traffic because the dump truck can't go through the canopy. It's going to have to get in there and back all the way out.
Right. We'd have to back down here and over there, and that would be once a week. Okay. Okay. I'm assuming that the people who are putting garbage in the dumpster are residents of the building and employees of the bank?
Yes.
Can any neighbors on Riverside Road see the dumpster now? Are there any windows along that western side?
There's some windows on the western side of the building, yes. There are a few windows on that, and you probably can't see the dumpster sitting there now today. So when we do the enclosure, again, it'll be an enclosure, you perhaps see down on them, but you're not going to see the front of them.
Okay.
Probably, excuse me, probably in the back parking lot, I suspect you'd have more people who could look down on them than we have currently today.
Are dumpsters on the same garbage pickup schedule that the residential is on, or is that separate and distinct?
No. I believe the businesses can arrange for different...
They have their own?
Different days if they need to. So I think they can be just on Thursdays, however, if they need more frequent pickups, they can arrange for different days for pickups.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Director Ab, do we have any other dumpsters that are on the front street?
Not that I can think of. Most of them have them on the side of the building or behind. We don't have, you know, I'm trying to think of other ones that are like corner lots and the building where Riverside Plumbing and the cleaners and stuff is. They have it on the back side of the building, so it's accessed off the drive aisle behind Same thing with the Arcade Building. They have theirs more in the back interior corner, close to the railroad track, so theirs isn't on that side of the building. I don't know. I've noticed a dumpster enclosure by Jeff's Auto, but that's the only other one that I can see that may have one that is between the street and the front of the building since it's set so far back. But just about everybody else is either on the side or behind.
Trustee Sedvey, are you an interested party?
I'm sorry?
Are you an interested party with comments or questions?
I would have a question on the height of the wall. I think as I see the drawing, the height's roughly seven feet tall at the base. I was going to say six, but I don't call it that. Yeah. I just, I don't know if that's, I just kind of compare that to fence heights and why seven versus six. Is there any limitations? Are we creating any other...
We have a minimum height of six feet for dumpster enclosures so that they are properly screened. There might be a little bit of additional in there just so they can have a nice solid base underneath it and then have the wall height. So some of that might not actually all be above grade, looking at it. All seven feet might not be all above.
Okay. Mr. Nofe, I'll consider that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the public portion of the meeting? There's a motion to close it?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone. Would anybody like to make a motion about this variation request?
I'd move that the variation request be recommended to be approved as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let's start discussing it then. As Director Ab said, we have seven standards that need to be met. Page two of the memo. First one considers practical difficulties or particular hardships. Does anyone have thoughts on that? It talks about particular physical or other unusual conditions of the specific property involved that's creating that particular hardship or practical difficulty.
I think the uniqueness of the three frontal aspects of this property certainly make it unique and different than other properties that would be comparable. See, I think they do have an issue, and then considering that they're going to have some elevation issues moving the garbage from one location to the back, if they move it back there, also presents somewhat of a unique situation, an unusual condition.
I struggled with this a little bit in terms of preferring it towards the back, but I think the operation of the bank with the drive-up precludes a location right adjacent to the back of the building and then forces it further, as the architect noted. I also support that the particular physical characteristics do limit the location of
I don't, I mean, from my perspective, the fact that it has two corner side lots is interesting, but it doesn't necessarily make it different than a lot of businesses that have no sidewalk because, for instance, along Burlington or Quincy where there is no sidewalk, and they have a frontage and they have a rear area, and that's it. They couldn't put the dumpster anywhere else. But I would agree perhaps that the fact that it has a drive-through and back and the nature of that makes it, that makes it somewhat unusual. So, you know, that could work into the calculation of whether this is a hardship because of the physical nature of the business and the width of their lot in the back there.
I think you often consider that if they do move it to the rear, it would cause them to lose two of a limited number of parking spots. Certainly would be a hardship. My other concern in hearing about the canopy is that you may, in fact, end up creating a safety hazard if you're going to have a garbage truck having to back out of that pretty long driveway if, in fact, you put it up towards, close to the building. So either way, if they put it in the back, they're going to lose two parking spaces. If they put it closer to the building, then you may have a safety hazard created by having the trucks backing in and out, so.
Commissioner Hannon, any thoughts?
I, I think the hardship issues that we talked about, I'm concerned about the backing in and backing down the drive-through lane, and I think that really provides a compelling reason not to have it in that area.
Standard B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain?
I don't think there's any issue with that.
Right. Three.
I don't see one.
C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property? I think we're okay with that one?
I think so.
With the fact that the dumpster's been there for time immemorial, I think we can agree on that.
And they didn't lay out the strings. The conditions upon which D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. Commissioner Miller, this is a bit of what you were touching upon, other properties similar to this. Right. Discuss that one.
Are there other properties like that that have three frontal sides to...
No, there aren't. But I'm saying like the fact that the ordinances would prevent them from having typically a dumpster on either of their minor frontage on the sides of the building, for instance. There are a lot of other business buildings that, you know, like Andiannas or any of those buildings that don't have that side. So they're not going to put the dumpster in the front of the building. Their only option in that instance would be to put it in the rear of the building. So I'm kind of comparing it to that situation where physically they're not being prevented by the existence of a building from putting the dumpster on the sides of their buildings, but the ordinance is preventing them from doing that. I mean, I suppose if you wanted to think of another building like that, you could argue that, you know, the place where Principal Dance was, Erica's Deli was, is something like that. I don't know where they put their dumpster. There may be a few other business buildings in the village that are like that.
I guess the distinction, now I want to go back and look at the overhead, but the distinction I would draw is that I'm unaware of any of those other properties being in a situation where they would lose some use of their property in putting, in complying with the ordinance, whereas they may lose two parking spaces...
Right.
Because of the conditions, or they may, in fact, create somewhat of a hazard by being in compliance with the code as it's written. So that's where I guess where I see the distinction. You may have other persons who don't have the option to do what they want to do, but they also aren't faced with two relatively poor choices or options that the bank is left with.
At this point, as we're working through getting the businesses to enclose their dumpsters as required by code, at this point, we have not encountered anybody having to remove a parking space, but that is not outside of the realm of possibilities as people try to figure out how to site them on their property to best serve their uses. So that is a possibility, that somebody might have to, you know, weigh the options in order to accommodate the dumpster enclosure. They may have to lose a parking space in order to accommodate it, but at this point, we've not had one that's had to do that just yet.
So to be clear, for standard D, what are our thoughts on whether or not the petition, the variation would not be, would be or would not be generally applicable to other properties?
I don't think so, because this property in particular has essentially public use on all three sides, and the rear has the drive-up, which I don't know. Most other buildings have a more or less-used aspect towards their rear.
I would just add, I think the creation of the drive-through lane adds a unique complexity to the situation that I think, even if there were other business properties with the sort of the three sides exposed, the ability to use the different sides is inhibited by the drive-through and the safety issue we talked about before.
I could see maybe the post office and Athletico having an issue, but it's not a corner street. It's just a driveway.
Right. It's parking lot.
Okay. So we're in general agreement that it probably is not applicable to other properties in the B2?
I would think that.
Standard E, that granting the variation would not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property improvements in the neighborhood?
I think that's met.
Agree. Would agree.
As Commissioner Marvel's pointed out, it's been there a long time, adding a wall probably will change things. F, the granting the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
I'd agree with that.
Agreed.
Okay. And finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood?
No. I do not think so.
I agree.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay. So based on this discussion, it sounds like all seven standards, in our opinion, are met?
Yes.
I agree. Would we like further discussion?
No.
The only discussion, further discussion I had is that I could not really see the dimensions of what you're proposing. I just read that it's going to be 14 feet, and I looked at the location, 14 feet from the wall of the building. So it's come out 14 feet from the building out?
Roughly, it's 14 feet out. It's roughly where the shrubs are now, a little beyond.
And then how wide is it? If you're, as you're looking at the building, as you're looking, you know, if you're standing at the end of the driveway and you're looking where the dumpsters are now, how wide is the space?
Sorry, I don't remember. I messed up.
Six foot two. It's six, six foot two according to your drawings.
Yeah. So roughly six by about six foot four high, and then 14 feet off the building, which would be just about to, a little bit beyond where the shrubs are right now.
Okay. So right now, it looks like the driveway's kind of used as parking spaces, sort of, so it wouldn't impede that use?
It shouldn't be, to my knowledge. It's just a driveway which we're replacing.
And the type of brick that you're using is going to be similar to the color of the brick?
Yeah. We're matching as best we can to what's on the building too.
And that goes to the root of one of my questions. As far as the matching of it, it's brick and brick. I mean, how, what's the ability to get that as close as it can? Or, I mean, I know it's difficult over time.
It gets this objective, but extremely close. I don't think we can get that brick today.
Agreed.
We'd get something that's very close to it. And we'll put a stone cap on top of the same, similar color. And we'd be glad to send us some samples first before we go ahead and build it too.
Director Ab, will you fill the role, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Marvel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hannon?
Yes.
Chairperson McHale?
Yes.
Commissioner pass this one.
So again, this is a recommendation that goes to the Board of Trustees, and they have the final say. And that's likely in a month or two weeks.
In about a month. So September 21st, I believe, is the next village board meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Good luck. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is old business, and it's blank, so I take it we have no old business?
No.
But we do have new business to review and recommendations to the village board on proposed text amendments to the code regarding canopy signage. First of all, Director Ab, I want to thank you and Attorney Mars for turning this around so quickly. Very appreciative. Anna Witsch, take it away.
So this is an amendment actually to the building code of the municipal code. So it does not actually require a public hearing. So with our review, make a recommendation to the village board, and they will adopt this text amendment, but we don't have that added scrutiny of a public hearing for it. So, but at the public hearing for the sign variance last month, they went over the fact that there's not really any allowances for canopy signage in the B1 district. It seems to have been some sort of oversight in the code change. And so as a condition of approving that variance, the commission asked that the village attorney and staff address this code issue so that we don't have this issue moving forward with the other gas stations. So all of our existing gas stations do have signage on their canopies. They also have signage on their fuel pumps, just so you're aware of that. Our proposed amendments add a definition for canopy signs and awning signs, so that those are in the definition section. Adds illuminated signs as being allowed for freestanding canopies. It adds canopy signs as a permitted sign type in the B1 district. And then it also adds some regulations about fuel price signage as being exempt signage. So the proposed amendments, you can see, let's see here. There's a, was an ever-expanding area of the code that addresses canopy and awning signage. So as you can see in the proposed amendments, that we added the definition for, as I said, awning signs and canopy signs. And then under the general standards is where we added that an illuminated sign may be located on a canopy that is not attached to a building but faces a public street or faces or is exposed to view from a public street or railroad right of way. This, I thought, was necessary because most of the fuel canopy signs are illuminated, and the ones that are being proposed are illuminated for our gas stations. So making that specific exemption for those freestanding canopy signs to be allowed to have that illuminated signage on their fascia needed to be added to that section in order for it to be allowed. If we don't want to allow illuminated signs on the canopy fascia, then we can have that conversation, but the Sidco on that variation that we approved wasn't an illuminated sign, as I say... As I stated, the one, there's a changeover happening at 2600 Harlem where it was a Citgo and it is now a mobile, ExxonMobil station. So they're in the process of rebranding over there as well. So they are waiting for this change to go through and they are also proposing illuminated signage on their canopy. Minuteman, I believe, is illuminated and they've got a little bit of signage on their, on their fascia of their canopy at least along, just along Harlem Avenue. So that's the canopy signs that we have. So there's that amendment in the code for that. And then you have canopy signs being added to the table under the B1 district. So canopy sign we listed as a sign type and then we're proposing one square foot per lineal foot of canopy frontage. This seemed like a bit of a compromise. A lot of places will do, typically when you look at like awnings and canopies, you do a percentage of the surface area. That's fairly typical, but with these freestanding canopy signs, we imagine it can be a little bit more. You get to very large numbers when you get to that because of usually what they're proposing to do. So I thought that the one per square foot could be generous, but still allows to be a little bit restrictive. Some of them may want to illuminate like the entire band of something, the frontage. And this would allow us to restrict that somewhat, but not entirely. Because if they're doing like an illuminated band all the way across the top of it, depending on how big it is, it's 12 inches tall, well then they've just maxed out their signage with that alone, not including adding the company name. So it does require them to make some compromises depending on what is the signage priority that they want without allowing them the whole thing, so to speak. So that was staff's proposal on restricting how much signage could go on the fascia of the canopy. Then you have, you revised the awning section and then added a canopy section under the B1 district. So we kind of revised awnings to kind of match canopies however we were doing it and we struck out anywhere where there was mention of canopies under the awning section, just so that was a little bit more clear. We also made some changes to reference some other building code requirements regarding awnings and canopies that project over a public right of way and things like that. So referencing that section in general as opposed to having it rewritten here. So that way if we make changes, it's really only happening in one place and we don't kind of lose track of that. So, new canopy restrictions would be that canopies that are considered an architectural feature of a building and are not used for advertising and are not considered a sign. So if somebody just puts up a canopy over their front entrance to be like an architectural detail, but they're not putting any sort of graphic or lettering on it, these restrictions don't necessarily apply. Some of the other restrictions that we have on here.
Uh huh. How was that made clear? That a regular canopy is not subject to these?
So that's what number one under G, canopies is. So on page five.
Okay, all right.
So canopies that are considered an architectural feature of a building are not used for advertising or not considered a sign. So there would still be the restrictions of 4-112 that might apply, but any of these further restrictions would not necessarily apply. Let's see.
Could you, sorry, I'm gonna jump ahead slightly. Number four, number three, actually. What are we defining as backlit signs?
So a backlit sign, backlit sign is typically, when you see those, like I'll call for instance like awnings. So you see those awnings that come out and they're illuminated from behind and so the whole awning kind of is illuminated. I think you'll see a lot of them like along Ogden Avenue. I'm trying to think of the one. Is it the Midas?
Almost has like a lamp, like a lampshade effect.
Yeah, so they will serve as a lampshade. So again, if they wanted to do, if they wanted that whole fascia to be illuminated, then that would kind of be considered a backlit.
Okay. Because I was just imagining light coming from the back, but I think you're looking at it as lighting towards the awning.
So if it's kind of lighting up that whole fascia on its own, then that's what we're looking at. It's being kind of a backlit canopy or awning. So the whole thing's kind of glowing.
What other, I'm sorry, Joel, go ahead. What other uses, we've been talking about this in the context of the gas station signs. It's now, that's kind of what's in my head as I'm thinking about this. Would this apply also to, we were just talking about the bank? The drive-throughs, are those also going to be canopies with the signage? Okay, so this would also apply to those types of?
So if we had, you know, bank drive-throughs, if you had these sort of like restaurant or Starbucks drive-through, sometimes those will put a signage on them as well. When you think about McDonald's and sometimes they do those freestanding kind of canopies that go over each of the drive-through lanes, when they do like the dual drive-through lanes, things like that, as opposed to just the one attached to the building.
I think definitely this applies to the banks and the drive-up canopies.
Drugstore drive-throughs? Drugstore drive-throughs, correct.
Okay. And then also, so where do we restrict, I don't, maybe I missed reading it, but where do we restrict the sign square footage or include the lighting in that restriction?
So.
And maybe I missed it, I'm not.
And I think that comes into our definition for signage. So when we're calling attention to something and it becomes illuminated, it becomes a sign.
Okay, if that's the case, then.
Was there something in here on the wattage or brightness of those lights?
No, we have our restrictions say that they're not supposed to be causing a glare onto the street. So typically, you know, individual letters are not necessarily going to be causing that, but we don't have specific wattages. We do have maximum illumination levels. Believe that is only applicable to the B2 district though. Typically, how we end up restricting things is when we have those more like lock sign type signage. Since our code says that you can't be emitting glare out onto the public right of way on people's properties. What I require them to do is to then make sure that the background is opaque and so the light is only shining through the graphics and the letters of the sign. Similarly for this, if it's going to be, you know, projecting out the signage, it's only going to be coming out of the letters or the graphic that they're have on there. If it's going to be illuminated, the banding, again, that's something that's going to be restricted to whatever that, that area is and they're going to have to make sure if it's, depending on how it works, that it's shining down or that it's just going to be that limited area. It's not the whole, you know, whether it's 24, 36 or 48 inches of fascia on those, on those canopies. It's not the whole thing that's being illuminated.
Okay. I'm kind of struggling with the strip of illuminating an edge of the canopy with 4- and page two. Item C at the top, where it says series lighting or neon tubing used to accentuate or trim windows, architectural features or their outlined borders of windows, signs of buildings is specifically prohibited.
Where are we at again?
Of the amendment, page two, top paragraph.
Ah, okay. So again, I was thinking that if you're just doing the neon tubing along the top, that's not necessarily what we're looking for. If they're going to be doing some sort of illumination, looking at like what Exxon is looking to do at their location. Where it's a little bit of an eyebrow and the lighting is, is being projected back at the fascia of it. So it's providing a little bit of a halo underneath that little red eyebrow that's, that's coming down as the detail. I kind of differentiated that from being like the, the series lighting or neon tubing. Those are the little kind of like.
It seems a little bit conflicted.
I can work with the Village Attorney to try to.
I think we need to.
Are you okay with allowing a little bit of illumination on there that's sort of like?
A little bit doesn't bother me since it seems to be rather typical towards gas stations but, and their canopies. But I'm questioning how, when we talk about we're going to eliminate, limit the sign to one square foot per, for the frontage. Do we include the lighting of the canopy in that limit? I'm, I don't have a good answer. But to me, it's an architectural feature of the canopy, so.
Well, I don't know, this may not be in order at all, but I have a lot of difficulty understanding this. I think because there is a definition of canopy in the code, which seems to conceive of something that's different than what we're talking about here, which is garage, um, gas station type canopies. So I can't really read the definition. Canopy, a roof-like shelter of canvas or other material which extends over a doorway or window in order to provide protection from sun or rain and which is held by a frame which is supported by the ground. That's in 1011-4. That to me is nothing to do with what we're talking about here. And yet we, this proposal talks about canopies of canopy sign and doesn't separately define canopy. So more, to me, it might be beneficial to have a definition of canopy that's specific to this sign section?
Well, we tried to incorporate a definition of canopy into a canopy sign.
I agree, but you could have a canopy that's not, doesn't have sign on it, right? I mean.
Correct.
So just sort of, yeah, a sign that is mounted, painted or otherwise applied to attach to a canopy. And then you say, which would be supported from the ground or deck floor or walls of a structure and a structure of metal or other incompensable materials, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't, I mean, for me, it would be easier to read this if there was a definition of canopy in this, I guess. Because in other parts, I think in here, it just refers to canopy or, I don't know. So the 4-3-9 says illuminated sign may be located on a canopy that is not attached to a building. So presumably, it's the type of canopy that's referred to in canopy sign as well. Not the kind of canopy that's defined in 1011-4. So I just find that it doesn't work to me very well together. And if we are going to have, if we recognize now that there are a lot of these types of canopy structures for gas stations and perhaps drive-throughs in banks, maybe it would be beneficial for clarity to have another definition.
So you think having a separate definition for each freestanding canopy?
Maybe, yeah. Somehow define, making it different than a canopy that's attached to a building that's in 1011-4. That could be, or a canopy used. The one that would be attached to a bank would not technically be freestanding, but it would be different structure than a canvas. I don't know, I don't know what the difference between an awning and a canopy is in the code, honestly. I mean, maybe that's preferred. An awning is a roof-like shelter of canvas or other material which extends over a doorway or window in order to provide protection from sun or rain. So that's exactly what a canopy is called. Except that for canopy, what's added is, which is held by a frame which is supported by the ground, but it's still attached, which it still extends over a doorway or window. And then I did have some concern like Commissioner Marhol was saying about the concept of illumination since we just had the gas station in front of us last time. About the, if the, as long as the illumination facing the residential area is not excessive. I'm not sure how to deal with that. It's just a general concern that I have. I mean, obviously, the illumination facing Harlem is, you know, you want that to be illuminated. You want it for the business, but you wouldn't want it to perhaps be at the same level facing the residences and walk on it.
Right, and we have general illumination restrictions, so they're limited to, I believe, one-foot candle at the edge of commercial properties. However, it's further restricted if it is adjacent to, if it's a shared line with something that's zone residential. So, you know, I don't think we have too many that have, that would have something that I think would be facing a shared property line with something residential. Thinking perhaps not. You know, a lot of them, you'll have like an alley or driveway or something that goes in between them. But typically, signage is only permitted on the face facing a public street or parking lot. So if it's maybe that there's parking on the side, typically there is going to be a certain amount of distance that's going to be there. So hopefully, again, that distance is bringing down the amount of glare that's happening.
You have, you have a restriction or a guidance in page one of the amendment with item Q, you tell them where they can have it. Facing a public street or facing or exposed to view from a public street or railroad right of way. And if you've got the definitive requirements about glare and such, I think we're covered on that side.
And we're only talking about illumination that's only permitted on the freestanding canopies anyway, correct?
Oh, this would be canopy, this would be on freestanding canopies, correct?
So I don't know that we have many freestanding canopies that are that close to the residential area, do we?
I don't think so, but where do we say freestanding canopies?
So in that same Q, it says an illuminated sign may be located on a canopy that is not attached to a building.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
So we're specifying there that it's only on these freestanding canopies that would be allowed to have the illuminated signage. Ones that are attached to the building would be restricted to non-illuminated signage. Again, typically with those, although I suppose you could make, you know, you could make an argument for some of them, but a lot of them, it's not going to be something that A, needs to be illuminated because it's not going to be in the front. You know, with drive-throughs, we prefer them to be on the side or to the rear. That's the recommendation in the zoning code for those. So those are not necessarily things that need to be illuminated. You know, they're not trying to see it from the street, things like that. If somebody wants to do a canopy that's over entrance and window area on their building, like if you look at some of the more, for lack of a better word, off the top of my head, modern strip centers where they might do the suspended awnings off of the front of the building as an architectural feature and they might allow the edge lettering to have any of the businesses that they're over. You know, is that really something that we want them putting illuminated lettering on the fascia of that type of attachment, that big signage? Do we need illuminated lettering on a bank canopy signage? I don't know.
Probably not if it's not open at night, but as I read this, if the drive-through is visible from the street and attached to the building, it can't be illuminated.
But if it's attached to the building, yeah.
And that some business might want to come into town, like a restaurant or maybe someday a pharmacy, dream big. And those would be illuminated. And this restricts it. And this restricts it.
That's true. They might want to have at least the drive-through thing illuminated so they don't have that. But again, that is, how much illuminated signage do you want? You know, when I think about a pharmacy, typically they're going to be on a corner. So that means they have two sides of the building itself. That are going to be available for wall signage that they can have illuminated signage on. You know, how much more signage that's illuminated do we want them to have, you know, that over the canopy? We could make some sort of exception for labeling drive-through lanes or something like that. That those kind of like directional signage would be limited to somewhere like four. Square feet or six square feet or something like that, so they could get, you know, at least one inch lettering. That's illuminated that says drive-through. Drive-through building, you know, composed, that we could maybe make an exception for.
And that's exactly what I found while Googling this tonight. So. I have another question regarding the project, the sign projecting above or to the sides of the fascia of canopy. When the people that came before us last month, didn't they? Request? That the triangle of Sidco extend above fascia?
Uh, no. So it was still within the boundaries of the fascia. It did project out because it was attached to the fascia, so it was about. Two inches, but it didn't extend above or below.
And then I had a minor suggestion in the four dash three dash nine. Um, Q, there's black lettering and then there's the red edition. And then there's another sentence that says such awning or canopy sign, which was written at the time when there was only one sentence, the non-illuminated sign may be located. And I don't know if there might be a need to say. An awning or canopy sign as referenced in this subsection Q, because now we have two. We have a non-illuminated sign, we have illuminated canopy sign. It might just be a little clearer if there's some.
And we can just say any awning or canopy sign shall be included with the total area?
Yes.
Yeah, something like that.
Oh, I guess getting into, if you're ready to, to get into some of the exempt signage regarding the fuel price signs. We're proposing adding. To the list of exempt signs, the informational matter appearing on gasoline pumps and fuel pricing signs. Including the names and grades of fuel and prices and conditions related to prices such as full or self-service or other signs required by the state or federal government. And that manual digital or LED signs of fuel pricing incorporated as part of a monument sign will not count towards the sign area of the monument sign. Provided the fuel prices do not exceed 20 square feet in area in the aggregate. So again, looking at the existing ones that we have. Signs like the one at the former marathon. When you take them all together, it exceeds the maximum for a monument sign. But if you take up the fuel pricing area. It meets the minimum, you know, it meets the maximum sign area requirement. However, they are typically. Required to provide at least one fuel price in their, in their signage. And I'm not sure if that is actually like a state or federal standard, or if that's just kind of like a gas station. Association sort of standard, but at a minimum, they always seem to be required to provide at least one fuel price signage on there. Ours tend to provide one, if not all three grades of gasoline prices on their signage. So this would give that a bonus. So to speak, to the ones that use a monument sign. Our allowances for pole signs allow for a greater area. Of signage, so it's less of an issue with those. But I think if we want to encourage monument signs, there's a nicer type of sign. They can, this would encourage them to do that, like perhaps a pole sign, because then they'd be able to incorporate that to a pricing without it working against them for their sign area.
Looking at the Amstar slash Minuteman and the Seven Eleven, do we, I think we need to allow them 20 feet on either side of the monument.
How do you mean?
If it's 20, 20 square feet in aggregate. I'm fairly certain that Minuteman has. Pricing on both sides of that monument. And I'm fairly certain that the Seven Eleven sign also has the pricing on both sides of the monument.
Oh, I didn't mean aggregate in that way. I meant like for, if they're providing pricing, you know, say it says unleaded or says regular. You know, mid-grade. Supreme, you know, whatever their thing is, that in the aggregate, those all taken together could not exceed 20 square feet. Not necessarily the front and back of the sign, because the way our sign area reads the definition of it, how you calculate signer, you only calculate one side of the sign.
If it's clear that it's only calculating that per one side.
Per side. So this just meant that like, if you look at the Seven Eleven, we would count the fuel pricing area, we'd make that into a big square. And, and that area in the ever could not exceed 20 square feet. And they typically like their bigger, bigger letters for their, their fuel price signage, so. That's assuming, you know, like an 18 inch to 24 inch letter as opposed to just like a 12, eight to 12 inch letter.
When I saw aggregate, I was adding up both sides.
So if there's a way you think that could be clearer, I just wanted it to, them not think that they get 20 square feet for each individual fuel price.
Sure.
You know, so, and try to put a maximum on it. So like if they, you know, somebody wanted to add diesel on there. That I wasn't giving them, okay, you get six square feet per. Fuel type. And all of a sudden they've got four fuel types and so now we're at 24 square feet. And then that's almost as much as they're allowed for a, you know, a regular sign. So to try to kind of. Put some sort of cap on it.
No, the cap is fine. I think the, the area is, seems adequate. Not that I've gone and measured those, I'm just. Not sure what's the best way is to define per cell.
Put it in parentheses. On one side of, if a double-sided sign.
Yeah.
I can try to see what the language is. In the code currently in the sign area calculation. And try to mimic that language and put it in parentheses after that, so it kind of helps to make that clear. Or I could even say, uh, you know, as calculated in conformance with the section that defines.
That, that might make it easier, but we are not repeating language that eventually gets changed.
Oh yes, and then there's the whole thing about awnings and canopies in the B1 of our four district. We're taking out, which is planning and zoning commission approval of any awnings or canopies in the B1 or in our four district. I think this is something that was overlooked in our sign code. Rewrite that there was any reference to the planning and zoning commission review outside of that. So this is also in the building code, where the sign code resides as a chapter in that. And so it says here that. Awnings and canopies are supposed to be approved by the planning and zoning commission. Prior to the permit being issued. So this would take that out and put review in there by the community development director. Which is what we do for the signs. And then we kind of mash things up with how we had written things for the B1 signs originally. So you can see that these regulations were written around 1990, 1998, but we did the B1 sign overhaul around 2007 to 2009. So we changed some of those things. So whereas before it said a clearance of seven feet, we seem to reference eight feet to eight feet, six inches. Depending on which district you're in. So, well, with the eight feet for the minimum clearance from the grounds to the lowest part of the canopy or awning. And then again with the, shall not project closer to, used to say two feet, but the B1 code said four feet. So change that, to mimic that language to four feet from the curb line. And then again, in the sign code, we reference then this section rather than having it in two places. So if it does change again in the future, it's. Nowhere to look to change it.
All right. Would you be able to get with Attorney Mars and take a look at Commissioner Miller's concern about whether the definition of canopy in other sections? Going to cause problems with this?
Yes, I can definitely. Look at that and see if we then need to add an additional definition of. Freestanding canopy or canopy here as a standalone in the, in the sign ordinance. Do you have other comments or questions, Commissioner Mills?
No, not now.
If, if you're talking to the attorney, could I just ask a question for clarification? If we look at four dash one dash 12. The section where, you know, we were taking out planning and zoning commission involvement. I just, I have a question. It says awnings and canopies in the B1 and R4 districts. So i- is this meant to apply to signs on awnings and canopies in the D1 and R4 district or every awning and every canopy?
Every awning and every canopy.
Okay, so then for, subsequent to that. So no retractable or fixed awning or canopy. Shall be altered, whether it has a sign under it or not, without building department approval. Is that? That's the intent? Okay. I just find it interesting that it's in the signs, but I suppose.
Oh, it's not in the signs. This is in the building code.
This is not the building code, this is not the, the sign.
Sign code is a chapter in the building code, so this is in a subsection.
Well, this is four one. Okay, I see.
And then the sign code is four three.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That was quite the fun little ram and trail that we kept acting down as we.
Well, because four one comes after four three. Okay, but it just figures in the memo. Okay, thank you.
So you're good?
I'm good.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, anything else?
Thank you.
No, nothing.
I've had it.
Yes, I'm good.
Oh, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so are we comfortable with me working with the village attorney to add that, add that definition if needed or amending the definition that's in there? And then taking that to the village board for? Approval? Do you want me to email you those definitions just to kind of get your feedback on them? Before this goes to the village board, make sure I'm on the right, I'm adequately addressing your concerns, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, and if he, if he says there's no inconsistency, then why? What his reasoning is.
Okay.
Right, that's, I'd just like to hear them say, yeah, there's, this is clear and we don't need to clarify this.
Okay.
So I think we've got. Couple different things. One is in four dash three dash nine. We made it any awning or canopy sign should be included. I'd like to address in four dash three dash 14, A1C. On page two. The conflict between disallowing.
Ah, yes, the.
Lighting for architectural features, but we do allow it on canopies. Then four three dash four, page five, item S. Make sure that the measurement is computed similarly.
For the one side.
For monument signs and then Jacqueline's. Awning definition. I think that covers everybody. Yes, no?
I haven't got yet.
Oh, sorry. Lost.
Yeah, I have a few. So back to four three nine. Am I the only one who wants illumination considered for potential drugstores and restaurants with drive-throughs? Perhaps with a restriction in the amount of space?
I'm, I'm not clear on what you're.
Well. Let's dream that we get a restaurant with a drive-through. If it's a chain, they have illuminated drive-throughs. And that's their design standard. And if right now, if it's visible from the street. It can't be illuminated. It can be illuminated. Like if you want to do recessed lighting in your canopy, like you would be allowed to do that, you just can't have illuminated signage on the canopy.
Right.
Yeah. So if they want to have, you know, an illuminated sign on there that says, you know. Let's dream big, Starbucks drive-through. So that's in the green illuminated channel letters on there. Technically, since those are attached to the building. If they do have a covered drive-through. Some of them don't. A lot of them don't, but some of them do. Like you have like a. For pharmacies, those will typically have an attached, for banks, those have an attached drive-through and they may have the illuminated letters on there. Drive-through or ATM, ATM only, they might have that.
Or open.
Open. On the, on the fascia of the canopy. So we do have some exceptions for like directional signs, you know, they don't technically require permits, so long as they're not greater than like two square feet. That kind of stuff listed under exempt signage, but. If we have a specific prohibition on illuminated signs, then that does. Kind of, I think supersede any sort of permit exception. I personally don't see any reason to prohibit, prohibit it. On any type of, or at least on a drive-through canopy that's visible from the street, that's visible from the street.
I think that's an important distinction on drive-through versus just general awnings. I, I, I see the rationale for that. I, I think it goes to the point of it's, it's directional and informative as opposed to, you know, we would see just on any awning. That is, is what we're, we're concerned about, but I think the drive-through creates a special. Uh, interest. I think what's. Interesting about that is not just open ATM, you know, whatever it is, but the. What else is on, what else is on there and illuminated? I'm not quite sure. Where the line gets drawn. There, you know, if it's just going to be in the context of a drive-through, I get more comfort with that, but I, you know. Maybe more. I, I just don't think that that's been sort of fully thought through. If we're going to expand it to a drive-through, what, what else, you know, how. Compared to what we just talked about applies then to the drive-through. It would technically be a canopy because it's attached, but how much of that applies to that dr- drive-through canopy?
So in this chapter, we're specifically talking about signage. So, and signage is on the. So, and signage is on the vertical fascia only of the canopy. So you might have, you know, like banks will always have the recessed or the kind of bulb lights under the canopy that's illuminating the drive-through for safety concerns, you know, so the video can pick up pictures out of the ATMs so that everybody can kind of see in that area. And that's typically part of their safety protocol.
Sure.
Fairly high levels of illumination at banks and their drive-throughs and their ATM facilities and stuff. So, but just because it's lit underneath does not make that signage. You know, that's just illumination and then that's governed by our general illumination restrictions, that you can't have that overspilling of the light more than like one foot candle at the property line. And that may mean that they have to recess the bulbs up a little bit, or they have to put diffusers, you know, cutoffs or something on them so that they're not exceeding certain illumination levels at the property line. If somebody's putting signage on there, you know, again, you know, illuminated, if they're putting, you know, I can see CVS, they want to put the red band all the way around it, you know, and have it illuminated, similar to how, you know, Exxon wants to put a little red band all the way around it and illuminate it. I'm going to count that as signage, you know. If you just want to paint it red, so be it. You want to start illuminating it, in my book, now you're advertising, and that's signage.
And I think it comes down to Commissioner Miller's question on the difference between canopy and awning. And it sounds like we're focused on manner of attachment.
No, an awning is always a fabric...
Fabric, okay.
...structure that has, it's on a frame that's support, you know, that comes off of the building. A canopy may be independently, you know, like if I have like the support things that come up from the building and come down and hold it up from the top, you know, and it's kind of independent, no things coming down from the ground. Or you may have a canopy that has, you know, feet that come down and, you know, are supported by the ground and then partially supported by the building and attached to the building. And then you have freestanding canopies.
Got it. Okay.
I think they're basically different in nature as I think about it, like the bank. Maybe they have a canopy that is made of a metallic structure, it's very substantial. Or you may have someone that has like a sitting area for diners and they don't just have a tiny awning, they have a very extensive awning that needs...
That's the bottom.
Right, that needs the poles to support it and we would call it a canopy. So maybe it's more than a definition of just a freestanding canopy. Maybe there's something else that you need to put into the definition, like a canopy for commercial purposes, or, I don't know, I mean, something. So that you could have one that's attached to a building that still is very much like a gas station canopy, it's substantial. God, it's stuck in, it's got mechanicals, it's got lighting, it's got that kind of thing. So maybe...
I share that confusion.
Okay.
That was, that was the point I was trying to make, that you carried over that.
Right, like the bank having the drive-through with three lanes, that's not just a canvas canopy, that's something else. But if it's attached to the bank, which I don't know right now, I can't think, you know, visualize.
It's attached.
Then that's, yeah, then that's not a freestanding canopy. So if they wanted to put a sign on that, you're right, this wouldn't apply, the new language wouldn't apply to that and allow them to put an illuminated sign on it. Because that's only allowed on a canopy that is not attached to a building.
Illuminated sign.
Right, an illuminated sign. And maybe this is extensive detail, but I don't know if that would include like having exit on the fascia of that canopy, or if when we talk about a sign, we mean a commercial sign for business, sales purposes.
It's like I said, we make exceptions for things like directionals, open, closed, those kind of things, and we don't count them. And as long as they require a permit, however, we do start, you know, we do kind of restrict size. So once it starts getting over a certain size, then we're like, well, you know, you're really getting into, you know, you're incorporating into more of an advertisement than just informational purposes. So, but again, if it's illuminated and it's on an area where something that's not, illumination is not allowed, then, you know, that, those rules supersede the exempt portion of that signage. So, you know, you could have a signage, you don't need a permit for it, but it still can't be illuminated. So, you know, we'd have to incorporate that. So I mean, we can... I'm still not sure if I'm the only one who's in favor of this. I'd rather do it now, or we'd have to do the board considering these text factors rather than later, if a situation comes up.
I guess I'm still struggling with, you know, the conversation we just had and how that applies to the drive-through and the drive-ins. So I think that clarification that we're going to get from the attorneys is going to help resolve this issue. Because I think, I mean, at least in my mind, you know, if we're going to have a drive-through and it's, you know, and the jut out from, not to get caught up in our nomenclature, is attached versus non-attached, you know, I think that should, that should allow signage because that's the natural use of that structure that juts out. So I'm in agreement with you that we need to address that, and I think it's addressed in the definition of canopy.
Because you get different types. Like I said, you get the larger canopies that are going to be over your banks and your pharmacy drive-throughs. Those are typically substantial, large canopies that come out, that are almost like an addition onto the building, even though they're not any walls. But it's, they're, you know, typically canopies. If you have like a McDonald's or a Burger King or a Wendy's, typically those will have canopies that come off of the building just over your pay window and your pickup window. So those have, you know, a metal canopy of some sort. Sometimes they might have an awning, but that comes out from the building and, you know, that five, six feet or something, just to provide that cover over the car as you're handing your payment over or picking up your food as you're leaving. So that you're protected from the elements, at least in that, and their people are protecting their elements, at least in that, in that transaction. So, and when you get into like restaurants, coffee shops, things like that, you're not going to see that same type of drive-through structure like you see for pharmacies and banks. So it's kind of a different animal for those. You might have like some McDonald's that have the dual drive-through lanes, you know, they have the menu board and then some sort of weird little awning that kind of comes over that second drive-through, you know, the drive-through areas that are kind of a pseudo-protection for you over there, but not really, mostly it's just an opportunity to make something glow yellow. In my professional planning opinion. So, not necessarily to protect you from anything, but it's just an opportunity to illuminate their branding colors right by their menu board. So, those are kind of the different animals you're looking at at drive-throughs. So again...
Let me ask you this, even if we were to take up the issue of potential for a pharmacy or someone else who may need that type of signage, would that have to be a whole nother provision for us to review then? Or how do we work that in?
Probably, or we would just put them into the sign variation channel if there's something that doesn't work out that way. You know, if there's some reason that they absolutely find unacceptable not being able to have an illuminated sign on their, on their drive-through. You know, if it's a matter of safety, if it's a matter of direction, if it's, you know, whatever the reason is that illumination is a must, you know, they have the opportunity for a sign. We're not saying you can't have signage, we're just saying you can't eliminate it.
I mean, I haven't thought about this issue before. As I sit here, I guess I'm thinking, I'm not sure if it's necessary to have signs on restaurant, coffee shop, pharmacy, drive-through protective canopy. So I can't say that I right now see that there's an important need for it, but I'm not against it either. I just, I don't see it right now. So, maybe it's something that could be examined and proposed.
Yeah, before we send this though, if we're going to, and I don't want to do it in the abstract, but there's going to be some language, then we should see some language. Does the, does the board necessarily have to get this at the next meeting?
No. The only, the only thing I can say that is pushing that is I do have the Exxon mobile waiting for their, for their sign permit to be able to go through for the canopy signage that they're wanting to replace that says Citgo to move it to Exxon. So that's the only, the rush on that.
But that's, I mean, but that's south of what we've talked about so far.
Yes.
So this, this drive-through is almost an additional problem to solve. But I think the groundwork has been laid in what we've corrected today.
So we can send this, if you are comfortable that we can kind of send this with what we've discussed so far, and I can again get the clarification from the village attorney whether he thinks there's an issue or conflict with the illumination and with the canopy definition, and if an additional canopy definition is necessary in the sign code chapter. And then move this through to the village board and we can address at the next meeting kind of working through drive-through, additional drive-through canopy signage and illumination if we want to work that out, or we can just discuss this again at the next meeting and then this is something that the board looks at in October.
I would say to, let's get the questions answered that we have submitted, and if we have to add another text amendment, we can do that after we discuss.
Given that it doesn't require a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we can... Now, we don't have any sort of imminent, as far as I know, drive-through signage. We gather more data.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do a survey of the banks we have, and look at some of the other drive-throughs in the area we have, and some of the surrounding communities. So on page 2, C, R specifically, instead of D's? And then one square feet per the front edge, would Citgo have made it? Yes, because they were not illuminating their band-aid, it was just the letters and the, and the triangle. So they met theirs. Okay. And have you seen Exxon's proposed signage? Yes, they would have to shrink down their happy little shiny band if they want to. Okay. And then while we're at it, 4-3-4, exempt signs? Just for future thinking, menu boards that you were talking about at McDonald's, that would potentially fall under exempt signs? Potentially? Potentially. Is that for us to discuss in the future? Yep. And again, that's something that, you know, I think I put that in my notes, a lot of communities will kind of call out, you know, places where there's special, special types of uses that have different kinds of requirements for signage and make some exceptions for those, like the fuel price signs or, you know, for like mechanics, oil change places, that kind of thing, to label the different bays and things like that. But they make some exceptions for those type of signs that are very specific to a particular type of, of use that aren't generally found in other types of uses. So that's, I think you could look at drive-through facilities and the menu boards as being something that is kind of unique to that type of system. How do we, how do we regulate that? Do you put it under exempt or is that something that you then add to a permit, you know, a type of?
So I can chairperson, I intend minutes to be in, my mandatory, no, it's not your fault at all, but I will not break the forum, will I?
No.
Good, okay. I will excuse myself.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay. All righty. Do you have information for us? Oh, do we want to, we should probably move, make a motion and second text amendment to the village board. So you want to make a motion recommending that these text amendments go to the village board?
I will.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, informational discussion. All right, informational items. We do have one note that at the last preservation commission meeting, there was some discussion about the zoning ordinance and new construction and attached garages. We are currently under review with the National Park Service for kind of renewing, so to speak, our landmark designation nomination. And one of the things that has come up between the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency and the National Park Service is that with these demolitions and new homes being built, what impact are they having on our landmark designation? And are they, is our zoning code adequately addressing that preservation of our landmark designation? And what was specifically brought up was front-loading attached garages. And so there was some discussion about what, what is it about the front-loading attached garages that has a negative impact on the landmark designation? So what they were talking about was that you have this prominence of a garage and this pavement where the front yards are supposed to be preserved to be that kind of extended open space of the front lane. So, so that's their primary concern with allowing the front-loaded attached garages. So they did not necessarily have complete consensus banning front-loaded garages. They liked that there were restrictions on like maximums. So, you know, when the driveway meets the property line, the sidewalk, there is kind of a maximum with at that point, and then you're allowed some additional flares, you know, as it comes to the street for the curb cut. But, you know, so it has to narrow down to, I think, 16 feet as it comes towards the street for attached front-loaded garages. They have to have individual doors, they can't have like one large, two-car garage door or three-car garage door. You have to have individual nine-foot, you know, your garage doors can't exceed nine feet in width, so that requires three individual doors. They can't project more than five feet out from the front of the building. It says that the preferences for rear-loaded garages, but it does not require it. And then there's those design restrictions on the front-loaded garages. So, but their concern was is just that that added pavement in the front that's required for these attached garages is sort of antithetical to what Olmsted's desire was in providing a more pedestrian, mucolic sort of front yard, walkable, enjoyable area. When you start putting in 24, 30 feet of wide of concrete, exposed adobe, whatever, you know, in the front of the home, that is taking away from that. The whole idea was that anything that was street, et cetera, was supposed to be recessed and not prominent. So there was some concern about that. So if this is something that the planning and zoning commission kind of wants to discuss further, you know, staff can do some further research into what types of things we could do to further either just outright ban front-loaded garages or to further restrict front-loaded garages to help minimize their impact.
Can you check also, I'm not sure my memory's any good, but I thought in the past there's been discussion about this, but I don't remember. And I thought the discussion was about how far forward, if I'm the street, how far forward the garage door can be in front of the front entry?
Maximum of five feet is how the code is currently written.
Okay.
Up front of the front wall of the house.
I mean, I think it's a subject that would definitely merit looking into. I think it does, walking around the village, you have an impact on the appearance. I think there's a recommendation that people, they have a front-loading garage recessed at back five feet, but it'd be interesting to see if anyone in the last, since that provisionary end effect has ever done that, or if it's always, you know, parallel with the front of the house. I think it's a good subject to look into. But you say, when you were coming, you said "they," is "they" being the preservation commission? Or the, the National Park Service has written a formal letter to represent?
Oh, no, it's just in, in sort of discussion purposes, as the IHPA is seeing more demolitions in town, as they're reviewing our contributing structure list, and more of the houses have been taken down since 2007 when our original list was submitted to them. That, you know, not that we're at any sort of critical tipping point, but just for us to be aware that this, this changeover can have an impact. And I think probably some of the most noticeable areas could be, like, on Black Oak, we had two grand houses filled right next to each other, both with front-loaded garages, or, you know, in some other areas where that similarly could happen. We have North Gate Court, where two houses were put up, both with front-loaded garages on North Gate Court. Not that, you know, that's a very short block there, but it is a, you know, significant impact down there with that much driveway.
Yeah, I think it definitely has a visual impact. I think it changes the, you know, the nature of the village going back decades, and maybe there's a reason for that in modern times, but I do think it has an impact on the visual impression of the village. I think it's worth looking into discussing.
I would agree.
Would agree.
Okay. And I can start kind of gathering some information, what other community news do, and we can kind of take a look at that. And then again, any zoning code changes that we make do go to the preservation commission for their comment and recommendation to the board on to whether, or determination on whether it has a negative impact or not on the national landmark designation. So this is, you know, as we work through this, this is something that they will be seeing and providing input to the village board on as well.
And when you say you'll be looking into it with other villages, those villages being also ones that have national landmark status? Or just villages within the county, DuPage?
Um, it would be other villages within the kind of the Chicagoland area, also probably specifically looking at ones that have at least historic districts.
Okay.
And what regulations they have on that. So whether or not they're national districts, they could just be local historic districts, but seeing how they, they handle that in those districts. And we're unique in that our whole village corporate limits are considered.
Because I think the difference is to be nature of the village that you're looking at. Obviously, some don't care, others have more of an interest in the aesthetics and the appearance of the villages.
Right.
So, it's who you're looking at.
Right, and the preservation commission isn't necessarily overly interested in getting into, like, the aesthetics and any sort of, like, architectural review of houses, but what their concern is, is in the, is the impact of that particular type of use on the streetscape.
Right.
Which is what we're lambasted for.
Right, that's what I mean by the streetscape, whatever you want to call it, aesthetics, appearance.
Yeah. Okay. Has the Greater Chicago Fairness Association pulled the permit? They have not. I wonder what's going on. So we have to follow up with our dear friends at the GCMA, kind of what's going on. Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Great.